We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees to business. It is being held today at the Administration Building. Today is Tuesday, October 10, 2017, and it is 6:30 PM. I welcome everybody, and we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to begin tonight with a couple of recognitions, and I'm going to start by turning it over to Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. President, Board. We are honored to have some special guests here, and I'd like to ask Trish Field and Gabe Naby if they'd like to come up now and recognize an important group of people in our community and some exciting news that will benefit our students.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Board. In a moment, I'm going to introduce our Monsanto representative to you, but before that, I did want to acknowledge a few people that made this Monsanto grant possible. One, of course, is Mr. Naby, a high school agriculture teacher who is the lead on the grant application and had all the great ideas that allowed us to get the grant. So, we appreciate his leadership, for sure. And I also wanted to at least acknowledge some of our local farmers in the audience. It was their support that allowed us to apply for the grant to begin with. School Corporation has to be nominated first by local farmers, and then we were allowed to put the application together. So, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind standing so we could acknowledge you, your support?
Please.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Hedrick. He's our Monsanto representative.
Hi, I'm Matt Hedrick with Monsanto. I'm just here basically just as a representative to thank you, the farmers, that gave back to the community, nominated the school, it's a $10,000 grant for the math and science program. It's going to be used for a gardening project, like a community garden.
Some of that, and some of the greenhouse.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a really neat opportunity. The program started in 2011. They do around $2.5 million a year to, you know, across the United States. So, it's a great program. Like I said, the nomination's brought up from the area farmers. The application process is gone over, and then Connersville got it. So, thank you, I appreciate your time, and you guys are very important to us and the schools, and that's all I've got.
And now, the good news. Monsanto ball caps for everyone.
Gabe, can you explain a little bit about what the grant will fund?
Yeah, I can take it. We're looking at getting new greenhouse tables. We had, the greenhouse has been there since I've been here, and I've been here 15 years. So, it's been there at least 16, 17 years. Some of you may know longer than that. And the tables are starting to get kind of rough shape, so we're looking at replacing those, looking at updating the irrigation system in there. And then, there's a portion of it, too, to fund some raised beds at elementary schools. We actually got another grant, too, through the National FA Association, so we should be, hopefully, we're looking at 21, 22 raised beds going into elementary schools. And then, I got a young man that's working on his Eagle Scout that's looking to put eight or nine raised beds at Eastview. So, hopefully, we're going to have a really good thank here, and we've got some food insecurity lessons we'll be teaching along with this. So, we're going to try to develop a whole curriculum that starts off, you know, why do we need this? Because we need food, and everybody needs that. And then, do a little camp food drive so we can kind of get food to those who need it. And then, in the spring, start it so they can start to see how to raise their own food. The classes hopefully will pick their own, whatever vegetables they want to raise. And then, the next fall, have parents and everybody come and take care of them. We'll do a little pilot program with Eastview. And then, come the fall, then they harvest those and eat them. At Eastview, what we did is we did a, just a real small bed. My wife and I donated a little one we just got from Walmart, a little cheap one, I think a hundred bucks or something, a little small. So, it was like a six-foot, eight-foot bed. And we raised a salsa garden. And then, K through two got to make salsa and had tri-salsa from the stuff they grew over the summer and all that stuff. So, it's kind of good for them to see that process.
Thank you.
Good job, Gabe. Good job. Thank you.
Okay. We're now going to move on, and we'd like to ask Alicia from Magic Moments. Alicia Montgomery is the Director of Magic Moments, and you're going to give us a little presentation. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you all for having me. We thought we'd just come and give everybody a little example of what we do up at Magic Moments. First of all, oops, gotta move. Our mission statement for Magic Moments is, oops, sorry.
From the beginning.
There we go. Okay. There we go. The mission statement is to provide quality developmental childcare in a warm and nurturing environment that enhances the growth of the whole child cognitively, socially, emotionally, and physically. Magic Moments staff help children develop trust in the world so they can go out and explore and learn. Our philosophy at Magic Moments is that we believe that education begins at birth, and it's our responsibility to make the early years count. We also believe that the future lies in the hands of our children. Therefore, it's our responsibility to empower them with the tools for success. The environment we provide is warm and nurturing, which enhances the growth of the whole child. And we provide hands-on experiences where children are encouraged to a variety of materials through play. And we promote that play by creating lesson plans based on the individual needs of each child. We are a licensed center by the State of Indiana. We are the only licensed center in Fayette County, which means that all of our classrooms are divided by ages only. And all those classrooms are divided by age, and the ratios are determined by the state. So, like, for example, our two-year-olds, it's a five-to-one ratio. Threes, it goes up to 10-to-1. Four-year-olds is 12-to-1. Currently at full capacity with 33 children. We are open all year round, except the only time that we close is major holidays. We are also on the Member of the Past Equality when we're Level 3, which that is Indiana's statewide rating system for early childcare and education programs. Level 3 focuses on health and safety, planned curriculum, and the learning environments for the center. There are four levels, which the last level is a NACY accredited, which NACY stands for National Association for the Education of Young Children. Just threw some pictures in. We have six staff members, including myself, and four of us have been here for at least 10 years. All of us have either a CDA, a degree in early childhood, or are working towards that degree. And every staff member has to have a minimum of 20 training hours per year. And we are also all certified in first aid and CPR. We provide daily activities, preschool activities, in every childcare classroom. That is usually from about 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And then, we also provide meals through Chart Wells. We have breakfast, an AM snack, lunch, and a PM snack. The curriculum that we do is based on the philosophy that children learn best through hands-on activities that address the needs of the whole child. And we incorporate the state foundations to the Indiana Academic Standards for Young Children. So, every week, activities are done in language arts, math, science, social studies, physical education, music, and visual arts. And we also do assessments on the children three times a year. And the assessments we use is called I*KR, which is through the Indiana Department of Education. That is all done online. And then, when that child moves on to kindergarten, that access then transfers to the kindergarten teacher if they wish to look that up. We also talk about the importance of play, and I found this quote I really liked, "Play is often talked about as if it were a relief from serious learning, but for children, play is serious learning." And we really focus on, they learn a lot through play, social activities as well. For our financial piece, parents pay a weekly tuition fee plus meals. For the meals, we just charge the parents what Chart Wells charges us. We also receive vouchers from the state for families who need assistance paying childcare. And then, we also have fundraisers every year. We have our annual fall carnival that was held just last Friday. We sell Texas Roadhouse rolls beginning next week. We do Art to Remember and Warm Glow candles around Mother's Day. And then, we also have a preschool program for parents who are only interested in having just the preschool for their children. That is offered three days, three hours a day for four days a week, Monday through Thursday. This is the sixth year for our preschool program. We currently have an AM class with 12 four-year-olds who will all go into kindergarten next year. And the PM class consists of 10 three-year-olds. And we operate on the same schedule as the School Corporation, except we do not begin until the end of August like Head Start. And then, other than that, the curriculum and assessments are the same as the childcare. We do the I*KR foundations, all of that. And we really focus on, again, the language arts, math, science, social studies. And then, we also focus on the social skills because that's very important for each child's success in kindergarten, is to be able to be socially, except with the other children in the class. Parents pay a monthly fee for preschool plus a snack fee. And then, this year, we received a grant from the United Way to help parents that couldn't quite afford the monthly fee, so we are able to give them, to parents, a scholarship. So, the grant pays for $50, and the parents only have to pay another $50 for the entire year. And then, lastly, we partner, we have a few partnerships with Head Start. We do have the classroom in our building. We partner with the Career Center. A lot of times, they have students that come down and do activities with us. And then, the Fayette County Public Library comes quite often with us. Every two weeks, the Bookmobile gets to come, and the kids get to go on the Bookmobile and get books. And then, also, someone from the library comes and does Storytime with us for that. We do have a lot of fun at Magic Moments. We learn, but we also have a lot of fun in building those friendships and those social interactions. And to conclude, I found this quote that I really liked, "A child's life is like a piece of paper in which every person leaves a mark." So, thank you for this opportunity.
I just want to commend Alicia, too. I love going up there and dining with the kids, and tater tot casserole day if anyone wants to go with me.
Is that your favorite? That's his favorite.
That's my go-to meal up there. It's a really cool place, and I just want to acknowledge your leadership and the job you do.
Alicia, are your children ever in a bad mood? I noticed that.
Oh, yeah.
Big smiles on their face, and that must be 24/7.
Yeah, we have our days that that happens, but that's working through a day and helping them learn how to deal with those moods, too.
What's the, and I haven't paid daycare for a very long time, how much, if you had to pay totally out of pocket, would be a week's tuition or a month's tuition at Magic Moments?
We charge $94.50 a week for the tuition, and that covers up to 45 hours for childcare because we're open from 6:30 AM to 5:30 PM.
So, it's under $100 a week?
Yeah, that's tuition, and then there's a meal charge on top of that.
Well, I think the value of, you pointed that one slide about they make friends and lifelong friends. It's how I met these two over here because our kids went to preschool, went to daycare early, and so, parents make friends, too. Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thank you, Anne. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any patron comments tonight on the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 9:12:17, the executive meetings of 14:17 and 9:20:17, and the special session of 9:20:17, the personnel report, which includes retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, the approval of the September 2017 claims, number 47579 through 47878, the Head Start Policy Council bylaws, the Head Start priority guidelines, and then donations, a grant from Lowe's for $23,000 for Whitewater Career Center, and then again, the America's Farmers Rural Education Grant of $10,000 for CHS.
What was the $23,000 grant from Lowe's? Read that someplace.
I have. The grant was written this summer by Rick Beaver, who's our precision machining teacher, and Beth Shank, who teaches graphic design. And it was written for MacBooks to make graphic design a dual-platform program so that students learn on PCs and Apple formats. And then, also for precision machining, a laser cutter. And they do a lot of projects together, so that's why they went together and wrote this grant.
Cool. That's really cool. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Andy? Excuse me.
That's right. That helps.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the action items. We'll start with the personnel report. Mr. Cirque.
Thank you. Certified staff, recommendations for employment. Karen Brown, adult education teacher. Kevin Knotts, also adult education teacher. Classified staff, Emily Allen, media assistant at Grandview. Angela Baker, temporary extended day education assistant at the middle school. Charlene Bennett, bus aide. Mary Blakely, after caregiver, that's hard to say, at Everton. David Burris, co-op maintenance student. Julie Keen, Title I education assistant at Grandview. Shelby Raider, Title I education assistant at Grandview. James Robinson, bus aide. Jamie Rose, Title I education assistant at the Resource Center of St. Gabriel's. And Dylan Weber, co-op maintenance student. And then, extracurricular, William Craig Alston, 7th grade, girls' white basketball coach at the middle school.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. A second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anne. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now move on to the board policy, 7.38. Mr. Collins.
Yes, an exciting policy on pest control. We will have our second read of that, and, sorry. There is just one change on this policy, and it puts us in compliance with maintenance of written records for our pesticide application. It was 90 days, now it's two years, so that is the only change in that policy. So, I submit that policy to you for formal approval tonight with that one change in the date.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Anne. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, approval of the resolution of appropriations and tax rates for the 2018 budget. Ms. Kellum-Tallett.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. Would you mind if I just follow the budget items into one discussion here?
Yes, so the...
Down the list.
Right, and then, when we go to vote, will we need to separate them?
You will.
Okay.
Yes, please. Tonight's the culmination of the work, beginning with capital projects meetings in the spring with the Finance Committee and the Building Leadership and the Director of Maintenance, followed by some work over the summer on the budget, then our budget workshop. We had our hearings last month. No items have changed, so tonight, for your consideration, the first item are the appropriations that have been presented to you and the related tax rates for those appropriations for the 2018 budget. The second item that we'll act on is the 2018 to 2020 Capital Projects Plan, which was, the projects were identified in our budget workbook, and the capital projects notices have been published as required by law. In addition to that, there is the Bus Replacement Plan, which is a 12-year replacement plan for buses. That, again, was presented in your book and a public hearing held last month. The next item is the approval of the Tax Neutralization Resolution for the Pension Debt. When the Department of Local Government Finance works our budget, we are required to make that levy neutral in that they will say, okay, you need $200,000 levy for the pension debt fund. Which other budget do you wish to cut that out of? We always elect capital projects, bus replacement, and transportation. Those are all of the possible funds to give me the greatest flexibility when I go to make that cut with them. And then, the last item is an authorization for tax levy adjustment, which allows me to make changes with the Department of Local Government Finance to get our budget approved timely. So, I'll be happy answering any questions you have on any of these items. But they do need to be voted on separately.
When does the DLGF, did I get that right? When do they approve the budget? What's the timeline?
Actually, the policy is, they have geographic areas, and whoever certifies their levy first becomes the first county to get their budget worked. So, Fayette County, the county officials that play into certifying for an assessed valuation were first this year. So, Fayette County's budget will be worked first. Whoever's second gets second, whoever's third gets third. So, that way, those that are the most timely get their budgets worked first. So, Wayne said we're number one this year.
Wow. I guess that's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Yeah. All right, great. Thank you.
You set an example.
It is the county. It's not the school.
Yeah, it's the county.
It's the assessor and the auditor for the county.
Okay, we'll begin with the approval of the resolution of appropriations and tax rates for the 2018 budget. May I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. May I hear a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Second, approval of the 2018-2020 Capital Projects Plan. May I hear a motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Anne. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to the approval of the 2018 to 2029 Bus Replacement Plan. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The approval of the Tax Neutrality Resolution for the Pension Debt. A motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I will make that second.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. To the last one, the approval of the Tax Levy Adjustment Resolution. Is there a motion? Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kellum-Tallett.
Very good.
Yes, we'll move on to the Public Law 221, School Improvement Plans for 2017-2020. Ms. Curzaro.
Thank you, President Jacobs. In your packet, you will find the school improvement plans for all of the schools, just to highlight some of the changes for you because it is a large document. One of the changes for this school year includes the implementation of NWEA for grades 2 through 10. NWA is an adaptive test similar to the test that the state is moving to, the iLearn. So, this is going to give our students a similar testing experience to what we will be moving to with iLearn in the next couple of years. It also is aligned to Indiana Academic Standards, so it gives us a good indication of where our students are performing and also shows growth, similar to what iLearn is, their initial model is to show growth. So, it's going to be a great experience for our kids, and we look forward to seeing the results. And I think teachers are excited to use the data and start modifying instructions to meet their needs. In addition to that, you will also see Marzano's research and framework. As a corporation initiative, we've decided to implement the first three levels of the framework, which include safe and collaborative culture, effective instruction in every classroom, and a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And we begin tomorrow with our PD Day, introducing this to all of our staff. And Marzano's research is over 40 years of research, and this will help us to work with our vertical articulation teams with ELA in math and decide on some critical standards, then design proficiency scales. And so, in the end, it allows our teachers to ensure that they're teaching the essential skills that those students need for either that particular grade level or that course. So, in the end, the effective teaching allows us to, it doesn't matter what the state test is, we're providing our students with the necessary skills to be successful in each grade. So, those are the main changes with our plans. So, do you have any questions about any particular...
So, you just said the Marzano approach...
Framework.
Framework. Helps our students regardless of what the test is.
Sure. It's putting in those practices of highly effective teaching in all classrooms, and it helps us narrow our focus. Marzano says that if you were to teach all of the Indiana Academic Standards, it would take 23 years. We obviously don't have that many years to teach that many standards. So, what we are doing with this Marzano's research is identifying those critical standards that each grade, each course needs in order for those students to be successful in that grade or that course to move on to the next grade or the next higher-level course.
And how far does the Marzano framework go? Through high school?
Yes, it's K-12.
K through 12, okay. And just a question, you may not be able to answer this, but you said the state's moving to iLearn. And is that going to be given just once a year?
Yes.
Okay, but NWEA, is it still going to be given three times a year?
The NWA test is given three times, currently given in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And then, that helps us to know if our instructional methods are effective, and then if we need to make some changes halfway through to ensure that our students are meeting that typical growth from fall to spring.
I do want to preface one thing, though, with the iLearn. The 3rd grade will have more than one assessment period because the way I understand it is, iRead is going to be a part of that assessment, so there will still be the summer retest. And I believe there will be a fall test for 3rd grade as well, if I remember correctly. Is that right, Kim?
Well, there's still some questions to be answered for that, but yes.
I think that's the way their opinion is, they're going to have three different assessments for the English Language Arts for 3rd grade, but it's just early, and they just announced the vendor, so.
Kim, is this, and this has been a bug for me for a long time. There's been a lot of accusations about just teaching to the test, and this would seem to take that out of the equation as much as possible because some of the stuff that's on some of the tests is not necessarily that important in the grander scheme. But I really like, I've been on record for a long time, I'm really liking the NWEA test and the resources that it gives the teachers and the fact that it does show growth because the kids, the kids buy into it. And I think that's so important when you get your test results back six months later and you can't remember anything about it. It's very difficult to create a climate of, well, you did really well on your iStep. Well, that was last March, and it's now December. So, the instant score on the NDBA, I think, will be, change the climate a little bit about standardized testing.
And with the new iLearn test... With the new iLearn test, I'm going to, I'm going to state what the state has said, that we are supposed to have results back in July. Just saying.
Just saying.
We've been told that before, haven't we, guys?
A lot of doubtful looks.
I know. But I'm optimistic because it's a computer-based adaptive test.
Right, it's uncut.
The feedback will be much quicker. And so I'm hopeful the state will get it right with this assessment. So they're spending $43 million.
To reject the lawsuit.
Is that right? $43 million, Kathy? Okay, we were talking about that. $43 million. We were spending $30 million, I believe, on iStep. So just to give you a different, we're spending more in the state.
I don't think we mind spending more money if it just works better.
Well, it better work better.
And I don't know this maybe information that has been around and I didn't know. So have teachers been trained in the Marzano framework for a while or is this?
It's a new initiative that we've taken on this year. And during the summer, the leadership team was trained by a Marzano facilitator. And then as we train the leadership team, then we're going back and we're training our buildings. So, and we still have contact with our Marzano researcher who provides us with support as we move forward. Marzano's been around for a long time, but this framework is just a way for us to be consistent. We're trying to build that consistency, K-12.
And another, maybe ignorant question, but is this a program we paid for?
Initially, we used some of the grant money that we received from the Early Intervention Grant to roll out the initial training of the leadership team. But most of the PD that we're doing is in-house with our building administrators.
Okay, so it's no cost?
No.
Right.
Other than the initial training.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And this is going to be a longitudinal study. And I think that's so important because as long as I taught, there was seen knee-jerk reactions to things and you'd never really got any consistency. You thought something was working and then, oh, well, we change it now. So are you looking at this particular framework as being a more longitudinal-type program that, that a child that's in kindergarten and has it now, when they graduate from high school, they will have had this consistency throughout the entire school?
We're trying to, to develop a clear vision of what instruction will look like in all of our classrooms, no matter what classroom that you're in. Marzano also presents you with some high-yield instructional strategies, things that research supports that over years have been successful strategies to implement for student achievement. So yes, as kindergartners become fourth and fifth graders, that common language, that common expectation of whether I'm in a first-grade classroom or in a fourth-grade classroom, there's a clear expectation of what that teacher's vision is for what instructional, instruction should look like in that classroom.
But also with the idea, also that each child is going to be slightly, each child is, this is not going to be a one-size-fits-all that, so the child's individual educational needs are going to be.
Differentiated.
Differentiated within this framework.
Yeah, the curriculum is the, is the, is the same, but how a teacher delivers that curriculum is based on the needs of that individual student.
Okay.
And that's where a lot of the PD support would be provided.
And the NWA also provides teachers with a lot of support in that, to know where those deficiencies are and where they can build on them.
Yeah, that was a, was a good test. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the PL 221 school improvement plans for 2017 to 2020.
Madam President.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The approval of the adult breakfast increase for 2017, 2018. Ms. Calvin Tollott.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. One of the great things that I think we do in our food service is we provide universal breakfast or second chance breakfast, as we call it at the high school. So all of our students are offered the opportunity for a free breakfast. Well, that comes with some new handcuffs this year in that the USDA is requiring a certain calculation to determine what your adult breakfast price must be. So earlier this summer, you improved increasing our adult breakfast price to $1.95. However, the state is telling us our breakfast price needs to be at 204 in order for us to maintain our universal and second chance free breakfast programs for our students. We would prefer not to deal with pennies at food service, therefore today we're asking you to raise the price of the adult breakfast to 205. We do not have many adults who purchase breakfast directly through the line. We do bill head start through catering for some breakfast. We are asking for clarification whether that is considered catering and can be charged at the price we currently charge them, or if we will have to raise that to 205 also. But I'm hopeful that you will approve this adult breakfast price increase so that we can continue to offer our universal and second chance breakfast programs.
When clubs are, I mean, when you have meetings or staff meetings and short wells provide you with food, that, if it's a morning meeting, that doesn't count, right?
That's not a, that is not a breakfast.
Catering.
That's a catering.
Okay.
And we order those off of a catering menu.
Okay.
Something.
Okay. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the adult breakfast increase for 2017, 2018.
To 205.
To 205.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. May I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Warren. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The approval of the purchase of the student activity bus, Ms. Calvin Tollott.
Thank you. Ms. Katrina Falk is here this evening, and I preferred her to give, to give her the opportunity to speak about the new activity bus. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I knew you would be.
About a week ago, we had a meeting with the athletic directors to discuss how we could keep our transportation costs down. And one of the brainstorms was to utilize our white activity buses more so than our yellow school buses because a lot of our teams have 14 or fewer students who can be transported in them. Right now, transportation, the school district owns one and a half of these white buses. We share one of them with the Career Center during the day, so it's not always available for us to use. And for the larger teams where we have a coach and assistant coach and there's two drivers, if we had two buses that we could use, we could utilize them instead of racking up transportation costs for a driver, especially when we have tournaments and drivers are sitting and waiting, sometimes eight to 10 hours for a team to come out. So like I said, the brainstorm led in the direction of exploring if we could purchase another activity bus, as long as it was within our budget that we already had established. I contacted our vendors. Midwest Transit does have a bus identical to the A2 that we purchased last year. It's obviously our preference to try to keep those white activity buses the same, same manufacturer, so on and so forth, so that when a coach is trained on one bus, it will be the same. So I've been working with Brent and Trent to put together a driver training program for our coaches to go through and get more comfortable with those buses. And I've submitted the details to Janie as far as the pricing for that bus. So it's available immediately. It's a stock unit. They've given us a discounted price on it since it is a stock unit, and they would accept one of our 2007 full-size school buses in on trade for that. And I've submitted that information to Janie. So I'll let her take that back, but that's where we're at with that.
Thanks, Katrina.
Did anyone see the picture of that as well?
I'll pass this. This is just a preliminary, they just worked up a graphics package. We can change it. I know there's some question on colors. We can do whatever we want to.
That rendering, that's including the price.
Yes. The graphics package.
And there was a question, I don't know if everybody got to look at. When we're taking our A and our red teams, two teams and things like that, we have 30-plus, we'll still use the bus, that's still our intent, but when we send one team to an event with 10 kids or something, or golf, there are times when these are much more economical and it's really becoming the norm. You see these at a lot of events now. You'll see a row of the activity buses parked. When we had our, one of the meets here, there were a ton of those. So it's a way to, especially at those long tournaments, we used to have a small group of kids going. We won't load the varsity basketball team up on one bus and the JV on the other and things like that. But it's a way to, for our smaller groups. Sorry, I didn't catch up. I just wanted to.
Is our other bus, is there a area in such way, our other activity bus?
No.
No.
No. It's a $400 graphics package. Available through our vendor. And once we settle on that graphics package, if we want to have that applied in the future to other buses, we can do that. And it's vinyl, so when we trade the bus in, we can, you know, get that off easily so it can be purchased by another school corporation or whatever.
So we can take our existing bus that's fully owned by Fayette County, back up and get the graphics added to it?
We can. The one that's fully owned by us, A1, that is coming up, I think in the replacement plan, so we may not want to do anything to that one, but it's something they can save and put on future buses.
Go ahead.
Is 14, 14 passengers, is this 14, like we have a 66-passenger regular-sized bus or is it a 14 real people-sized bus?
It's 14 because it's got, it has the seats in it, so it's 14 students plus the driver.
Okay. Because the 60, the big school buses, say, three in a seat, sorry, that doesn't work. That doesn't work real well sometimes.
Does have the individual coach seats like charter buses.
Does it have extra space for storage for stuff?
There, we can add that. There's a little cage that we can buy for the rear of the bus so we can secure items. And I believe our A2 has the above head storage as well, which this one would be the identical twin to A2.
So that's storage above the seats too. And then also air conditioning, which is a nice feature.
So how much, it being 48,302, I guess, we're buying the bus and obviously to try to save us some money. So when would be the break-even point? Like how much time would it go by before we can justify the, the bus?
We are not increasing the size of our fleet. We're trading one in. We're trading a large bus in for a small.
Right, but we're still paying $48,000 difference, correct?
Correct.
So.
No, not for, well, yes.
You're trading the bus in plus 48 grand.
Yes.
Okay.
But we're not going to replace that large bus.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I know we're trying to, we're buying the bus for the intent of saving money, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so how much time is it going to take for us to recoup the difference in 48,000? If we were not buying the bus and we were just to keep what we have, how much do you assume?
I think it's dependent on how much.
Well, then you would replace that big bus, which would cost us double that.
How much life is left on the 2007?
It's not. It's been parked all year because there are issues with those buses that we have taken them out of service.
Oh, okay.
Anyhow, so all of those 2007s are sitting up there, not being driven, being waited to trade in for next year's large bus. So, you know, we would, we would be replacing that.
66,000 bus, which is far more than the 48, obviously.
Yeah, double that.
So, yeah. Okay, I didn't know the 2007 wasn't operating. I thought we were just taking one of our fleet and just like.
No.
Spending an extra 48 and saying we're going to save.
No, all of those have actually been, maybe one of them's out still. They're all parked? Okay.
Okay.
At one time, they talked about still having to have one, so, but they're all parked waiting to be traded in at the first of the year.
Is this a 2017 model?
It is.
Okay. Does it come with a warranty?
Yeah, we can also add an extended warranty to it if, we didn't discuss that, but there's options for that.
Okay. Yeah, I think that Jane, when she purchased the buses, didn't they go ahead and opt out for like a 10-year warranty, which would extend the life of the vehicle?
Yeah, was it 10, is it 10 years, what, we're operating under our 16s?
Some, the 17s have a 10. For some reason, like the 2010s and 2016s, we opted out of that extended warranty, and I'm not sure what the circumstances were, but there is a 10-year warranty available on some of them. And I can check with Midwest Transit and see what our options are on that.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm sure warranties change as far as the cost, but I think, just in speaking with Jane, she would, she opted to purchase a 10-year because it was really cheap.
We must not have had it on those 07s because they've been sitting there a while. Just saying.
But I remember her talking numbers and at the time, I was like, oh, man, that makes pretty good sense. Okay, that's, yeah, I just want to clarify that. I just, I'm sure.
Comment? I'm not in favor of asking our coaches to drive buses, whether it's the activity bus or any other bus. I know it's a financial concern. I think that's important. I think we should be very careful about how often we're asking our coaches to do this. I'm concerned about losing coaches. I think it's a great responsibility. Do the buses have governors on them?
We can add, I mean, it's all computerized, so we can, we can do what we need to.
Do they have seat belts on them?
No.
I pretty much addressed the board as far as my concerns about it. I just, I just don't want to ask the coaches to drive the buses. That's all I have to say.
I've ridden on those buses. I'm in agreement with Mark. I think that there's an awful lot going on. And I can understand having a coach drive a bus under an emergency situation, but how much, I guess, how much money are we going to save by not having a professional driver to drive that many buses? You know, how much is it really going to cost us? I understand on the long, long tournaments and having the bus drivers sit there, that's a problem. And, but we want our kids to participate in those kinds of things and that's sort of the price of that. But coaches, at least at the middle school level, they don't get paid very much beginning with. And to add that extra responsibility on them, I think is, like Mark said, I think that's a little bit much sometimes. We've got to do what we've got to do.
One last question, sorry. Have we, I know I haven't personally, has anybody talked to coaches about the possibility and about the option of that?
Yes.
I have.
Me too.
What were their feelings? If you don't, if you don't.
Well, I'm a old coach. I wouldn't want to drive the bus. And the coaches I've talked to in the last week, I guess they had a memo, they were going to be driving these buses, but they weren't excited about it.
The ones that I talked to said, they asked me, they said, are we really going to have to drive the kids also in the many buses? I said, I said that something is a possibility and, and they, to a person said, well, we would rather not have, we would rather not do that because of all the other responsibilities that are involved, and particularly in the wintertime. Driving that bus is not, is not going to be like driving a personal vehicle. And I think they felt much more, having ridden on school buses and fan buses and athletic buses, I was always glad that there was a professional bus driver handling that. And I think what just happened with the Sunman Dearborn bus, which was admittedly a large bus, but that driver had a lot of years of experience. And had there been a novice driver or, or somebody, you know, not as certified or qualified, that could have been a disaster. So, you know, forewarned is forearmed.
Well, like you said, you know, Scott, that, or something, I got to pack a, you know, try to cram the whole team in there. This sounds like it was kind of be, maybe specialty things, limited things, very rare that it happens, is not, I know that the vehicles.
The groups drive them now. The Career Center instructor will drive, like Scott's or.
They drive them a lot.
They drive them a lot. Gabe Navi will drive kids.
Okay.
With different things.
Having skills.
Golf teams, things like that, so...
They're already doing that?
Yeah, we're already using the bus. I drove teachers and administrators to Shelbyville one summer for two days to training. I mean, so there's a lot of uses for them.
Okay.
Don't we have a job coach that drives every day for special education?
Yeah.
She drives our regular bus to various businesses.
What sports are we actually talking about that are small enough that would be utilizing the activity bus for sporting event?
Golf teams, tennis.
Cross-country, perhaps?
Well, our cross-country team's pretty small right now, so you could take the cross-country team possibly in it. If we took the seventh-grade red team to a tournament only, there are 10 kids on the team, you could fit them in there, things like that.
You might speech, not sure how.
Speech teams.
I don't know how large our speech team is.
Yeah, so groups like that. Not the football team.
And you're saying they are already utilizing these small...
For my time back, we've been using them my whole time back. We use them regularly in my last district. That was pretty much a norm for all the coaches in the small groups, so...
But the ones now that have small groups, like the golf team, have they been using the full-size bus?
No, they've been using the mini buses.
Okay.
Well, some do and some don't. I mean, you know, part of why we're having this conversation is there are times when a mini bus could have been taken and is not taken because there, you know, a lot of schools have moved to, you pay for the bus, they bill athletics for the driver. We're trying to avoid moving to anything like that because then that cost just passes back to the players. What we're doing is we're asking when there's an opportunity, when the team is of that size, or when you have the seventh-grade boys' red team only going, that you take the mini bus to contain their costs so we don't have to move to something like that down the road.
So is the coach there currently, like the golf coach that you mentioned there, that are currently using, you know, the mini bus, is that coach driving or do we have a professional driver?
No, I used to, when we had our new teacher academy, I think the girls' golf team had used the bus the day before, and there was still grass and stuff in it from the girls. I was sweeping out before I took the teachers around in it for when we drove around.
But that coach drove?
I think the coach drove with that, Nick Chris.
But part of what Katrina's going to do is put together a training program.
That's what I was just going to ask.
That any driver who drives it has to go through this training program and gets comfortable driving it before. In addition to that, we've talked about there's going to be a pre-trip review of the bus and a post-trip review of the bus. So that way you've got where people are checking it before they take it out and then also when it comes back. So if it comes back on Tuesday night, somebody's going to have checked it. And then whoever's taking it out on Wednesday or Thursday will take it, check it before they go out also. So it's not just about, hey, get on that mini bus and drive it. We're putting in some layers to support these people and to make sure that we've got the buses in good condition, or activity buses, I should say.
Couple of questions. If we had 10 all-state choir kids going somewhere, would the choir teacher and those 10 kids use an activity bus?
That would make sense to me.
Or an academic team that qualifies for state?
Sure.
That academic team and that coach would drive that bus?
Speech.
Are they all fully covered as everybody else is that drives the bus, right?
They're in the same training.
Yeah. But I meant the insurance liability, they're fully covered from the corporations?
Because they are employees or volunteers of the school corporation. They've, we would have record that they are a volunteer coach and that we've done a criminal background check on them.
What were you going to add, Katrina?
I was going to say Levi Thompson, the speech team coach, they're already utilizing the white buses. So we do have teachers, journalism, yearbook, they use the white buses. So we already have teachers. And what we're doing, we have copies of a driver's license and, you know, there's steps that we take on our end to make sure that we'll need to do with our records as well. They're not DOT regulated, but there are steps that we can take for nonDOT drivers to cover us in case something does happen.
And the Career Center, a lot of their skills events or their competitions, I know we've had a couple of buses, I think, that went to Louisville a summer or so ago. They use them a lot for those types of events where they're taking small groups to those competitions.
Have you talked to, since you both have talked to coaches, have you talked to anybody who's driven those?
Yeah.
Okay.
My nephew, for one. Coach tennis at Brookville last several years. He's driven one for several years. I've talked to, talked to him about it. I just don't want us to get in the habit of they're going to be driving these buses all the time. I just, again, I'm back, and maybe it's the old coaching me or the old club sponsor, as far as that goes, that I just think there's a lot going on on the bus that you can be using for constructive criticism, teaching moments, you know, how's your family, what's going on at home?
It sounds like we're already using them.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't tell us anything different than what we've been doing instead that we're purchasing a separate one.
I think the difference is, Leslie, and this is what I picked up from the middle school coaches that I talked to, it was told, this is what they were going to do. You know, that this was going to be a change, that this was going to be required somehow. And that's not the sense that I'm getting here at all, but that was what I picked up from them. It says, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to have to drive these kids. And so I think there was some misunderstanding as to the scope of that. And that, no, we're not going to cram 22 seventh graders on the same bus along with everybody else. But we have so many, your example is a good one, but it's also very rare. There's only about three games a year where we don't double up as far as the seventh and eighth grade playing at the same time, or two seventh-grade teams playing. So that's really a very, very rare occurrence. But how it was coming across to the coaches that I spoke to was that this was what they were going to do, and I think there was some misunderstanding about, you know, the numbers and the like. They thought, well, are both of us going to have to drive a bus? Is the seventh-grade coach going to drive one and the eighth-grade coach going to drive another? And...
I think the question was asked when we met with them. What is the number that you have to take a big bus? And what was it, 29? Katrina said 29. The question was, what's the number you have to take the big bus? It wasn't a question of less than that, you need to divide up and take too many buses. The, that may have been what...
Was heard or something.
Was carried back. But the question was, at what point do you have to take a big bus, correct?
Correct.
And so I think that got, well, I jotted in the translation a little bit. And so we, Mike and I, we're spiraling back and we're going to have another meeting and clear that up. Because there's a big difference between that being the number that you have to take a big bus versus what you can do below that, so...
And I clarified that in an email to you while the question was asked. There was a misunderstanding in one of our buildings with that, and so they're going to go back and clarify that.
Yeah, there's just some confusion there. And if you've ever ridden on a middle school athletic bus, it's, the coach serves a very, very, a very different purpose sometimes depending upon the mood of the bus. And you need the extra adult on that bus to help keep things under control. And you can't do that and drive at the same time. So, you have to consider the number of adults that you need on a bus when you have that number of kids, and particularly on a longer trip, so... And some of us don't ride those buses anymore. We go to the games, but we don't ride them.
Actually have a much better ride than a school bus.
Well, yes, it's coaches.
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously, yeah.
Air conditioning and...
Yeah.
Okay. We will now move to seek a motion to approve the purchase of the student activity bus.
Yeah, I will take that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'm starting it.
Thank you, Warren. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is the time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and/or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in the final. Seeing none, we will move on to the report items. Superintendent's Discussion Group's report. Principals, Directors' reports. Director of Human Resources' report.
I have a couple of quick things to report. First of all, in the action items, you noticed two people that were employed, David Burris and Dylan Weber, who are co-op students. Just wanted to make you aware that we're partnering with the Career Center, and those co-op students are working with our maintenance department. And they've been doing that since late September, and it has really been working out well. I know the new maintenance director made several comments the other day about how his crew has really appreciated the work they're doing and what they're learning. So it's a program that we had a few years ago and got shut off for one reason or another, but we've got it back. And I think it's going to be a good thing for not only the kids in the program, but for our maintenance department too, to have additional hands out there. Also, I want to just give you an update on our negotiations with the teachers' union. We've met three times, and it's been, in my mind, three very, very good meetings. Everybody's been very cooperative, working together as a team. We've come up with pretty much where we think we're at at this point. We're waiting for the attorney to finish some language work and then we'll get back to you on that. But it's been a very positive for not only, I think, our group, but also for theirs. And it's been really good. And finally, in, excuse me, consent agenda, we had three retirements. I know Max Powell was recognized a while back for 50-plus years of service. Calvin Durham, 21 years, and then Paula Free will be retiring after 25 years at the high school as the guidance secretary. And we appreciate all of their hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Director of Finance' report.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I want to give you the bad news first because I'm going to finish on a high note.
All right.
So, count day was September 15th, and I had, as I shared, already budgeted a decline in our student enrollment. However, we declined even more than that by 28 students. Our normal K-12 is 3,297 students. So just nice round numbers. That's about $180,000 worth of revenue that I had built into the budget.
But that's count day, right? And count day, is count day just the number of students that are present on that day, right?
Yep, and that now takes up, yeah. So it's $180,000 we won't get next year that I had built in. I mean, and I built in a decline, but so anyhow, we all know that our enrollment's declining. However, on the positive note, our bond sold today.
Okay.
Yes, and our bond sold at a premium. And that what me, that what that means is we're going to get $2,026,000 for our $2,000,000 worth of bonds.
Yes.
Each coupon, from the first ones that pay out to the last ones, the interest rate is 2% on. Normally you'll see a graduated interest rate in that the longer the bonds are held, the higher the interest they want. So when you take the interest, we will pay it 2% and you subtract off the premium, that calculates to an imputed interest rate of a little bit under 1.55% for those bonds, which is a little over $34,000 in interest cost that we will save over what they projected. So that's really good news. Tomorrow, the successful bidder is to deposit $20,000 good faith. I've given them the wiring instructions. It should be in our account by 3:30 tomorrow, and we'll actually close on the bonds on Halloween. So we had five bidders, and it was very competitive. Two of them were very close. The highest interest rate was 2.26, but we had a lot of interest. Our Standard and Poor's rating on these bonds, we had a, I had a conference call with Standard and Poor's and the Bond Council, and it went really well. And our strong financial position contributed to the strong Standard and Poor's rating, which equated to good interest in our bonds and lower interest rates. So I'm very excited that we're going to get that money, we're going to get some projects done, and move forward.
Jane, what was the number difference from 3297 to last year? How many students did we lose, Hannah?
Let's see, from last year at this time, um... Last year at this time, we had 3402.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. 3410.
3410.
And what happens is, they've done away with, we'll still have the February count day. It's not a funding day. But usually what happens is your fall count was higher, your spring count was lower, and then your fall count bounced back up. Our spring count was 3348, and I budgeted for 3325, so why even budget a decline from that February number? And it was more than that, so...
Thank you.
Welcome.
I appreciate your work.
Thank you. I like what I do. I appreciate being here.
The bond company that we have handling things apparently has done a wonderful job.
Um, Bob, they are financial advisors or bond, they do a lot of work, various types. They're handling our investments too. We actually sold off some investments a month ago that we had had with Fifth Third. And some of those sold at a premium, so we made money. We did not lose money on the total package. We cashed those out, bought some more staggered terms with some higher rates of return on those. So I really like working with their investment group also. That's it.
Thank you, Jane. Assistant Superintendent's report.
I'll just have a couple of things. First grading period has ended, I believe, and teachers will be starting parent-teacher conferences, and the middle school will be starting their student-led conferences in the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, yeah.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about what's going on tomorrow?
Um, yes. All the schools are doing a little bit of a different type of schedule, but we're going to start with some Marzano framework training. And then the individual administrators have all submitted different PD opportunities that they feel their building needs to capitalize on for tomorrow. And then in the afternoon, elementary and high school and middle school will be conducting some conferencing with parents.
Does that start at the same time for all three levels or not?
No, no. You know, each building is doing a little bit of a different thing depending upon the needs of their building and the needs of their staff. The only consistent thing is that they're doing the conferences and the Marzano training, and then depending upon what their building needs are, they are branching out and doing additional things to support their needs.
Okay, well, being the board's representative on the calendar committee, I know we worked real hard to help the elementary teachers out with conferences.
Yes, and I think they're very appreciative.
And I was glad that we could do that for them.
Sure, and I think they're very appreciative of that.
They are.
And we've given them, we've given, yes, we've given them a nice window too, because people that have children in more than one school, sometimes trying to get those things scheduled was difficult because of smaller windows. So if you have kids in three different schools, you can, yeah, you can get it done and you don't have the time crunch because of...
Yeah. And as a parent, I was really excited to have the high school teachers, my son is a senior, and I had high school teachers reach out to me and ask to do conferences, and that's exciting. It's the first time I've had a conference with a teacher at high school, so it'd be, it's a new thing, and I really, as a parent, enjoyed that and want to hear the things that, even though he's a senior, I still, I want to be involved in his academics, and so I'm looking forward to spending some time over there.
The seventh graders are in a panic with student-led conferences.
Of course.
Absolutely.
They have to talk to their parents.
They have to talk to their parents, and there's going to be a teacher there, and I worked the book fair there all day yesterday, and they said, do you know about these things? I said, yeah, they're okay. Well, how do we do this? Don't get, don't get panicky. I don't want my parents here. Well, that's, that's not an option.
Kim, if we have teachers that have kids, are they allowed to leave to go to a conference? Has that question been asked?
Our, my belief, and I think we tried to get principals latitude, you know, we have some people who coach. If they're getting ready for sexual or something, that was like Randy, you know, you have a coach, our volleyball coach.
Right.
She will work out and deal with her principal. She will work out a deal with her principal, hey, I'll make these times up, other times. You've gotta have some flexibility.
I was just thinking, we surely have several teachers with kids that have conference tomorrow. So I'm glad we're flexible with that.
At the elementary, it's pretty normal that, you know, the elementary teachers will spread it out over a period of a week or more, fit them in whenever they can. So, but this is one dedicated day when, you know, I got an invite to meet with my child. Don't tell her I told that.
It's on TV three, so.
But that's the first time a high school teacher's ever reached out to us as a parent. And so it's a change and, you know, trying to reach all levels because the farther you get away from elementary, the harder it is to get parents in. So our high school teachers have been making a concerted effort, Mr. Judd, haven't they, to try purposely get parents in to meet with those who need it. And so I'm excited to hear how it goes and we may tweak and fix some things after the feedback. But it's all about the relationship piece and that's the foundation of Marzano's work, is that first tier, is that collaborative, safe culture and the relationship. So you hired me as that kind of guy. And so we start with our homes and with our kids, with our, that's what starts with the kids. So, I didn't mean to hijack you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report, Scott.
Just a couple of things. Our ISBA regional meeting, October eighteenth. I'd like to take a couple more of you with us. So let Cindy know by Friday if you can attend. It's October eighteenth and we will leave about five-thirty from here. Starts at six-thirty. Registration's at six. So if you would like to go, please let Cindy know by Friday. Also the same with the NSBA conference in April, April seventh through the ninth. Let her know that she needs to do some registration for that. So a couple of you already notified her. I wanna acknowledge our counseling team and those of you who were on the Lilly Grant pursuit. We did not receive the three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant. It was very competitive, but I wanna commend the folks who worked on that. There was a lot of hard work. And, you know, we were able to get the smaller grant, it was thirty-five thousand, which gave us a lot of opportunities to planning. But I think it really gave us a good chance to evaluate our counseling program and the supports we need for kids. So regardless, I just wanted to say thank you to the folks, our counseling team and the administrators and everyone who worked on that, and support members who were part of that. So, bad news, but we've been on a roll with getting grants lately. So I really thought we would get it. Didn't happen. So I wanna thank Cindy for tonight and her work on taking good care of us. And our culinary arts students, they set the bar really high with this year. And I wanna acknowledge those desserts are amazing.
Did you share about the high school grant, school safety grant? I'm not sure that's been shared. You might want to share that too.
I don't know. Good news, yeah. Janie, why don't you, you were the architect of that with working with-
I don't recall it in any communication to the board, but we were awarded a fifty thousand dollar school safety grant. We have a match on that.
I had a broken back. I think it happened when I- And it was a safety grant.
Yes, yes. So the largest part, again, we do have a fifty thousand dollar match, which I've already accounted for in the rainy day fund. I've committed those funds to take them out of other use, to carry them forward. It will replace a lot of doors and locks at the high school so that we'll be able to secure our rooms. It will be a part of a key tree, if you will, in that administration will be able to have one key that gets into all of the rooms. The additional component of the grants will add some more security cameras to that. I didn't think we had a snowball's chance, so I was really shocked. And we finally received our notification that we had won the competitive grant.
That's great.
And that was a matching grant?
It is a matching grant. So for every dollar they spend, for every two dollars, they'll reimburse us a dollar for those specific projects that were included. So I didn't mean to hijack yours, but when you said we've been getting a lot of grants, I'm not sure. We told them about that one, so, yeah.
I'd actually like to list all the ones we received in the last year because it's been pretty substantial. Two more things on transportation. I wanna acknowledge Katrina and the work she's doing, but you received a flyer in my Friday communication. If you can come by the bus garage on October twentieth at noon, there will be a lunch, appreciation lunch during National School Bus Safety Week. And so there are gonna be vendors there, they're providing a lot of things, something to acknowledge our transportation folks and the job they do every day. So you're welcome to come out. There will be plenty of food. I will be there. There's food. So, but you're welcome to come out then. And Katrina, I wanna make sure I invited you to that. And then also, I wanted to acknowledge Katrina. They have something called Rising Superstars in school transportation nationally. And Katrina is on the list as one of one hundred and twenty-seven nationwide who's been acknowledged and recognized for that. And then finally, the grants we get and the donations we get, you know, Lowe's twenty-three thousand and then our Farmers Group, ten thousand. Every month, we have generous organizations in our community and outside our community. And that does a lot for us, just in funding programs. So I just publicly wanna thank those who support schools in so many ways, area organizations and national organizations. So that's it.
For the good of the cause, anybody want to share anything tonight? Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, I'd like to commend the Head Start group and then the first graders, the ones that are involved there for first grade school screenings, for vision screenings. They do a phenomenal job and do a very well organized, very smooth, especially the Head Start, getting the kids over to the Miller Building, getting them in and getting them taken care of. You know, we're really appreciative of that. And then same thing for the first graders. It's, we, it used to be we would, the eye doctors would go to either Grand View or Frey-Z and they would bus all the kids in. But now they kinda changed it the last two years where we go to the, we go to schools. I go to Eastview Everton in Maplewood and go through. So Mrs. Hood is who I work with in Maplewood, I believe Mrs. Grohl's at Eastview. And I, sorry, I can't remember the lady's name in Everton.
Mrs. Sherman.
There, yeah, okay. I thought it was over the ass, for sure. But yeah, either way, they were great, got the kids taken care of. And so just a really, really smooth and really thankful for that. So, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah. I love doing it. I think it's fun. You know, those kids jumping around, I don't know. I like kids in the office, you know, they're fun. So.
I bet there's a classroom, a kindergarten classroom you can go to.
Yeah, I did stop in after the screening. I stopped down and said hi to now Mrs. Yorian, so walked in and it was fun. So.
Any others for the good of the cause?
I just wanted to, again, commend Janie on all the work you do. You are such an excellent steward of our money and we're so fortunate to have you.
And we're so glad you do it.
And I also wanna give a shout out to the Career Center. You know, not just the donations that, Sonny's still here, yes? That come your way. And I'm not sure, I'm guessing it's from all the wonderful work you do and that your teachers are finding these grants and going for it. But I think it just must put our Career Center on a whole different level. And I've just been really excited to hear about it. It seems like every meeting, somebody's donating money and-
Our teachers work really hard on finding resources. They do a really good job of that. They do.
And I do wanna also commend Scott, and I don't know if Kim was involved in this bus accident that occurred and just how quickly our emergency services folks get there. And just really wanna commend Scott on keeping all of us board members in the loop so quickly on things that happen. And just helps all of us to know what's going on and we appreciate all your work. So. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. A second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. adjourn.